6:00 PM, I'd like to open up the meeting. Are there any adjustments to the Select Board Agenda? I don't have anything. Okay. Any public comment? Okay. So, we're gonna be waiting for some other folks to show up for the Route 14 commuter. I assume that Skip Lindsay was gonna be here to talk about the energy plan, so we'll hold off on that also. So, I guess what I would do is make a motion that we approve the bills to the town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the September 9th, 2019 Select Board Meeting and the September 16th, 2019 Special Select Board Meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, let's see. We're gonna jump around here a little bit. The Animal Control Officer, I spoke with Kim and I told him basically that, you know, we, the town was not worried about any liability over the action that happened with his dog. And as far as I was concerned, that he handled the situation with the other dog owner in a way that should've been done, so he's setting a great example. And that I felt that he was a very valuable asset to the town and it would be very unfortunate if he resigned. So, he said he would check with the other dog owner, which is his neighbor, and if they were okay with him staying on as the Animal Control Officer, then he would stay on.
Oh, good.
That's still the same way.
Yeah.
These things happen.
Yeah, it was an unfortunate thing, but I think, you know, he handled it as anyone should, whether you're the Animal Control Officer or not. So, there was a message from him last night that he had spoken with the other dog owner and that everything was okay, so he was willing to continue.
Resend his letter.
Yeah.
If he does a good job, yes.
So, we don't need to reappoint him?
We don't have to accept his letter.
I never saw a letter.
I never saw a letter either.
Okay, I got a reservation. Yeah, yeah. All right. So, he is active Animal Control Officer.
Unless you want the job.
I guess, so when he came and spoke to you, did he, I mean, he should've sent us a letter.
He should've. But he did resign to me.
We never got an official letter, so as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, all right. So, I'll ask him if he wants to be officially reappointed.
He doesn't have to be if you didn't accept his resignation.
Plus, even if he gave us a letter, we have to accept that. Just to scare him out the door and slam in.
You can always, you know, have a cooling off period before you...
So, he is still...
Still the Animal Control.
Okay. Good boy.
Too bad you can't get rid of your job that way.
So, are you Nick?
I am Nick.
Great.
Yes.
Okay. So, I am Michael Bray, a Select Board Member.
Bray and Chatty.
And Paul Siruti.
And you guys are next on the agenda, because I know that you have to be somewhere else.
Calus at Seven Muck, East Mount Kilier at eight. I think there's plenty of time.
Plenty of time, good.
Okay, so I can give you an overview and I think you have this.
Already received this.
It basically tells you everything. We have received a grant through V-Trans to provide service starting in Morrisville to downtown Barry. It's starting off as a commuter-type service focusing on those that would primarily use bus or public transportation to get to their places of employment in the morning and then return in the afternoon. This is a little odd because Morrisville and Barry are both GMT territory. RCT covers the Northeast Kingdom, so Palatine, Orleans, Essex County. We also handle demand response and non-emergency medical transportation such as Medicaid in Memorial County. So, but we have buses stationed in Morrisville. And originally, this plan was for us to start the service in Hardwick and go down to Barry. That only made sense because the bus was going to be starting originating in Morrisville to start the actual route there, otherwise it was gonna be empty building from Morrisville to Hardwick. So, GMT has graciously allowed us to just run with it. Like I said, we handle public transportation in the Northeast Kingdom. Our largest commuter route is the US-2 commuter, which goes from St. Johnsberry to Mount Kilier. The idea behind this route is that the US-2 commuter and this Morrisville-Barry will intersect at the Washington Electric Co-op Hucking Road in this Mount Kilier. If you are on the US-2 commuter coming from St. Johnsberry and into the towns in between our school, Plainfield. You would be able to get off of our bus, get onto the other one of our buses, and go to downtown Barry, which is now where V-Trans has moved their employees. If you are on the bus coming from Morrisville and you'd like to go to Mount Kilier, you can get off one bus and get on the other bus and go to Mount Kilier. You can also access the link to Waterbury and Burlington in Mount Kilier as well, so our transfers times get those as well. RCT is all fare-free, so anytime you step on an RCT bus, it doesn't cost you anything. It costs you through your taxpayer dollars, but it doesn't cost you anything additionally for fares. And that's the same thing that's gonna happen in Morrisville, so we won't have any fares there. The idea is to start this within a couple of weeks, so it would be October 7th is the target date. It has been pushed back a little bit, but October 7th is the plan. And, you know, that's about it. We've got a list of confirmed and potential stops. We are, we wear a lot of hats at RCT and our Operations Manager and I have been working through the list of stops from Morrisville to Barry. And so, if you see anything here that you think would be, that wouldn't work, I would appreciate that feedback. If you see something that you think would work, I'd also appreciate that feedback. And as I mentioned, we don't charge any fares. We do go to the towns that we work with or serve and ask for some sort of a donation or appropriation. And the main reason is because when we receive a grant from the state, it's typically going to be 80/20, so 80% federal, 20% local match. In this case, the grant is going to pay for the operations portion of it, but we are having to provide a new bus that will be arriving in December, January, just specifically for this group. The new bus typically costs $100,000 to $20,000, and here, we're ponying up to 10% of that, so that's coming out of RCT's pocket. If the town were gracious enough to donate any kind of money or offer any kind of appropriation for that, we'd be obviously grateful.
Do you have a figure in mind?
$12,000.
Conveniently, 10%.
Well, we give GMT like $500.
You know, I was thinking $500, if that was something you would consider. And obviously, like I said, we would definitely work with you on any of the stops that you feel would be appropriate. This isn't an area that we typically serve because it's GMT's territory, but we're more than willing to work with you. I feel it's a good opportunity for your residents to be able to get to Barry, Mount Kilier, and beyond, at least most of the way fare-free.
Have you guys stopped at people's houses, or will be designated places?
So, there will be designated stops, and you can always flag down the bus if it's safe to pull over. We can obviously pull over. With our circular service through St. Johnsberry, Lyndonville, Newport, and our demand response, we would either go to your house or deviate off of the routes by three-quarters of a mile to get us a heads-up. On a commuter route, we typically wouldn't deviate too far, but you can always flag us down. And if there is a stop or we find that there are multiple people who would like to utilize, say, the rec field, I'm just making that up. That's where they would like to park. We can obviously deviate off that. The idea is to get as many people on the bus as possible. It's not necessarily to make it as easy as possible for the driver. We try to balance that, and obviously, we want to keep people safe. We don't want anybody walking out into the road. We want to be able to pull off as far as possible. All the buses are equipped with wheelchair lifts, so we do sometimes need to be able to pull off far enough to operate those lifts as well. So, those are the kind of things we try to keep in mind, especially in the winter, snowbanks. We don't wanna drop anybody off to be in the middle of a snowbank and then...
So, when they meet in East Mount Kilier, both buses will be there, so people won't just get off of one bus and stand there until the next one shows up?
Yeah, this actually, the whole schedule is built around that transfer point.
Being right on.
Meeting, yes, meeting from there. So, we started from there and worked backwards in both directions.
Well, if one bus is late, you're not just gonna leave people there, the other bus will wait for it?
No, we would be able to wait.
Yeah.
Be able to communicate that. And then, that original US-2 commuter route was also based around GMT links, so meeting them in downtown Mount Kilier or the DOL parking lot. So, if you need to get to Waterbury or Burlington or beyond, you can get off of our bus and get onto the link.
So, the stop in Woodbury is pretty much right out here and right in front of the...
So, that's what, that's a, that's one that we were thinking would be a good location. Obviously, we can just sweep the church and get, finalize that. You know, and some folks would not, or some locations may not want people parking in their location. Obviously, we need to take accountability for those parking there. But if you feel that's not a good spot, or is a good spot?
People do use it sort of as a parking lot.
Okay.
And, you know, we would be glad to check in. There's probably Darwin Thompson.
Darwin.
No, the other...
Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff Thompson, that would be a check road.
Yeah, I would appreciate any, any kind of assistance.
Yeah, really, they have two places for people to, near the village.
There probably wouldn't be more than three floors at most, and that's never been a problem with us. For people who park here now.
Do you have ridership projections from each community based on population?
Based on GMTs, no, their projections. We haven't done projections ourselves, because this was, originally, this was set up so that we were going to be sharing the route GMT, and then it only kinda happened within the last couple of weeks that kinda went towards one. So, the challenge is, is that we are fare-free, GMT is not fare-free. You've got two different colored buses, you've got two different logos, you've got two different systems that are operating. That's what we deal in the US-2 commuter. It took some time to work itself out, and, you know, people understand that. The feeling through V-Trans, and I understand this, is that if you start a new service, it would be a bit odd that you're gonna have, you know, which bus do I get on? What time am I supposed to be getting on this bus? And you've got two different colored buses and logos going in different directions, so the thought was, let's give it to one per bus.
I got one, Woodbury, I can think of Dan Giannis's girlfriend. She doesn't drive, and she, I think Dan's been driving her. She, at one time, she was working at Tim's Convenience over in Plainfield, so, but she wouldn't have a way to get here if she, you know, so I didn't off Woodbury Village. If somebody was there, they would still stop for one person or another.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And like I said, the idea is to get people on the bus.
Yeah. Guess you could wait until close office in the morning or something, and she had a schedule, so that's good. I'll let them know that. They'll be excited about it, yeah.
Do you have suggestions for how we reach out to people in general, or people in particular, to try and increase ridership?
Well, if we knew...
We have a couple of websites. Obviously, we could advertise on Woodbury Connections and Front Porch Farm.
Yeah, actually, Woodbury Connections does exist. We have, yeah. Front Porch Farm is kind of one of our better ways of communicating in Woodbury, and we do have a website. We have the local, our local public journalists here.
Thank you, sir.
And then, I don't know if you, are there any other groups where there were people that, you know, we might be knowledgeable that could benefit from something like this? I mean, you just mentioned one person. So, we could just try to kind of brainstorm that on our own.
Yeah, we start advertising on some of the websites around here, and maybe we can generate people's attention.
So, you could do public service announcements in the Hardwick Gazette?
Because it's pretty expensive for somebody to drive themselves to Mount Kilier and back every day, so this might be a nice option for people.
We could bring some materials here.
Yeah, that would be helpful, yeah. One question I have is, you know, the return trip, you're gonna bring people down there, kind of commuter time, and then the bus will drive back. I can't imagine a lot of people going from Barry to Morrisville in the morning to go to work.
Probably not.
So, you know, just wondering if, you know, with a return trip, if, say, somebody wanted to ride down to Barry, Mount Kilier, and do some errands, you know, two or three hours' worth of time, and then catch a ride back. If the bus were to wait like three hours or four hours to make a return trip, that might, might connect with more people wanting to get back after riding down, rather, especially if they weren't working.
Is it designed as a commuter route?
It is a commuter route, yeah.
It's not like a fixed rate.
I think what we probably have to do in that case is evaluate ridership in both directions and maybe 8:00 PM, and then hopefully add some additional rates. Because financially, if we were to keep the bus in Barry for three hours, you know, we're looking between $60 and $70 an hour for the bus to just sit there. Driver wages and the operating and the bullet of quit, and so you're really, and also, the other challenge is that it's, it's not our, you know, we don't have the Medicaid contract or the others type of non-emergency medical transportation contracts for Barry.
Right.
So, we really can't do anything there other than kinda sit around and twiddle our thumbs for three hours. But I completely hear what you're saying. I think what we'd have to do is add on an additional rate once we have some, some figures. Because V-Trans will provide more money if we can show them these are the amount of riders that we've got, we have projections moving forward, and the idea is to get, like you said, more people to get out of their cars, get onto the bus. But you are right, though, it's probably gonna be pretty thin coming back to Morrisville, I guess.
And then maybe thin going back down in the afternoon, too.
The bulk of them are probably gonna be coming from Morrisville, Hardwick, going through the square to Barry.
When I think about the, you leave downtown Barry and you head to Hardwick, is there any commuting potential there for start times in Hardwick? Do we know of employers or job access flow going from...
So, again, it's basically everything, everything is based on that leaving time at the line. So, adjusting it off of this, we're really, V-Trans, it has, we have the new bus there at that time, so changing times.
The original proposal had RCT servicing this way while GMT serviced that way.
Exactly, yeah, so you had double.
And it sounds like we're down to one.
Yes. So, there was, so in between that, when it was decided that just RCT would handle the transportation, the afternoon, we were actually, the suggestion was, V-Trans was would actually mimic the way it would be if GMT was going to be doing it as well, but we would actually have an empty bus, theoretically, an empty bus going back and forth between Morrisville. So, in the afternoon, we'd go from Morrisville to Barry, then back to Morrisville, and back to Barry, and so that, that was gonna be, you know, $40,000 more to have pretty much an empty bus going back and forth.
Then the other question you had before was, what was the performance measure? Brian asked before we got here. What's the performance measure? How many people do we need to see from start to end?
So, that's a good question. There are different categories, and I would need that the state uses to measure based upon urban, obviously, this is not urban, small-town commuter, rural commuter. I would need to check with V-Trans to see what this particular type of commuter route would fit into which category, and then from there, I can tell you how many passengers per hour, or how many revenue miles, meaning miles that the doors open to passengers coming on board, what the acceptable, unacceptable, whatever the next one, extraordinary, whatever the next, the greatest level is. But I can get that, I'll speak to Tim, watch out on that, and find that out, and I can actually know what, what performance levels we take. And the first year, it's gonna be, you know, that's more like getting the word out and and doing the marketing and really trying to get people excited about it. So, it should have a, it should have a...
And this is a three-year project?
It's funded for three years, and that's typical for this type of funding source. The funding source is known as CMAC, which is congestion mitigation and air quality. It's a federal grant. They're typically for three years. They're designed to, in rural areas, to promote public transportation, get people out of their cars. And the thing with the, what has to happen is, V-Trans, we have to show that it's working enough, V-Trans will then be able to come up with the funds to roll it over into the regular federal for the three-year loan funds. Once that happens, then V-Trans is on the hook for putting some of the state money into it, and we're on the hook for putting our own local match money into it as well, beyond just purchasing a new bus. This is operating funds which pay for the driver and the gas that goes in the bus. That's a 50/50 split. So, when, when it gets converted to that, just those portions of it, RCT will pay 50% of that cost, so 50% of the driver's wages and benefits, 50% of the dispatcher's benefits and wages, 50% of the fuel. And then the administrative portion of that, so my salary, the license for, for RCT's offices, that is, will have to pay 10% of that. So, there is some, some hefty expense that will come along with it if this, idea is for it to be successful, but we will get punished for our success.
Now, you say, you say you're going to Barry, what about Mount Kilier? Those are another route from Barry to Mount Kilier, I guess.
So, there's a couple of things. Mount Kilier, the US-2 commuter continues to Mount Kilier, so if you wanna just go to Mount Kilier, get off this bus and get on the US-2 commuter.
Oh, there's another one there, okay.
Yeah, so, or what you could do is you could utilize the, is it the city shuttle? The GMT shuttle that goes back and forth between Barry and Kilier.
Yeah, because I was figuring there's probably as many people going into Mount Kilier in the morning as there is Barry, not more.
Yeah, they would, they would transfer a bus in any Mount Kilier.
Yep, you just, you get off this bus, you get on a commuter bus, and you're taken to downtown, you're taken to downtown Mount Kilier, you're taken to Colletree, downtown Mount Kilier, the DOL lot, National Life.
Yeah, this is a little deceiving Barry, because it does, it gets you Barry and Mount Kilier.
Yes, it gets you Gary, yes, yeah, you would have to transfer.
Yeah.
And then you have your choice, you could really, not to, not to dissuade anyone from using GMT, but if you just get on the RCT bus, it's still fare-free to get to downtown Mount Kilier.
So, that might be something, when we're doing like public information about this, we might wanna mention that, you know, this, this group suggests it just goes to Barry, that there's also...
But you can still get to Mount Kilier.
That would be a good thing to...
What we can do, this isn't in the regular bus schedule yet.
Right.
It's still being worked out, but the US-2 commuter portion, this is here, gives you a GMT portion of the, and a RCT portion of it, and where, where we stop along the way in Mount Kilier, and there's multiple places in Mount Kilier.
So, they could talk about, you link at the East Mount Kilier parking lot, which could get into Mount Kilier by this time based on the existing route.
So, if you work in National Life and you live in Woodbury, you can now get to Long Island. And then, or any of the state offices downtown. V-Trans moved from National Life to downtown Barry, which is gonna be in this, this little place. We've got the Department of Education still, we've got the libraries, there's a lot of state, state departments, and then anything in downtown Mount Kilier, like a college, you could utilize this for.
Nick, when people think about public transit and buses, what should they picture when it comes to size of bus on this route?
So, the size of the bus on this route, so our US-2 commuter is, is a heavy-duty style bus, so that's what the US-2 commuter is. The size of bus for this route is gonna be more of what considered a cutaway, so it'll be a pickup truck or a van front, kinda like a smaller, bit of a type of vehicle. So, you'll have a pickup or a van front, and then the bus portion in the back. The bus, the brand-new bus that will take over this route in December, January, when it comes in, is, I believe, about 30 feet long and will hold 22 to 24 passengers if there's no wheelchair options being utilized. Our largest bus, the city-type bus, is 35 passengers, and that's the US-2 commuter. And that's frequently full.
Wow. Anybody that rides down to Barry can expect to leave Barry to come back here by bus at 5:10 PM? So, you're down there for the day?
Yeah, yes, you're down there for the day.
Yeah.
Yep, and you finish, finish work, it's state 4:30 to 4:45. If you're, if you're in Barry City Place, it's only a walk and a half, walk just past the courthouse, you can, or right across the street, pick up the bus there, and then you're on your way back.
Yeah.
And then it's a short ride. If you, if you live in St. Johnsberry, say, you have a short ride back to the ref lot, and you switch on that route to Mount Kilier, you're gonna meet at the exact same time at the ref lot, get on this bus.
So, somebody was, was not commuting to work but just wanted to go down for the day, they could also catch a link to go up to the mall, or to the hospital, or get a few appointments, or something like that.
Airport, yeah.
I think of a day as in Barry, Mount Kilier.
Yeah, yeah. That's like my, the only thought. People aren't just gonna go down there and do a little grocery shopping and then stay there all day.
Probably not.
This is mostly for working.
At this point. Hopefully, it'll be utilized enough that we can add on another, another leg of it.
Maybe a route or something, yeah. But I understand that's pretty tough to do without...
You gotta start somewhere.
So, I wonder if, if two stops in Woodbury would be better than one, like one in the village and then one here? Would that be possible?
Yeah, anything's possible, because...
No, yeah, we do, they have the two centers.
Nice.
But we have two dirt roads, kinda...
We don't really have a parking place in this Woodbury center.
So, we could, we don't necessarily have to stop somewhere where there's a parking lot necessarily, and we can pull over in front of the store, you know, people dropped off there, or something like that. Do you have an idea of where you're thinking in the village?
Right in, right in the center, where the...
Churches and the town hall and the former store.
Well, we could, you know...
But once we get our, our other project done, there might be...
There are a couple of spots with the park, and the...
There are two parking places in the park.
Town Highway Department could keep those open in the winter if we requested.
Yeah, we have...
And then this, this is open, I know the town plows the, pretty, they don't plow the church loop there, but they do pretty much plow the whole parking area here.
Yeah, they're pretty early. I mean, they know we can...
Yeah, they're, it's usually done by, long before the bus would get there.
So, I think it would be beneficial, especially I know that if Dan's girlfriend was involved, she'd be walking down off the hill down into the village, so...
I mean, maybe that would be something to try at first, and if it doesn't seem like anybody's taking advantage of the village...
We could always turn it into a request stop, which means we're not necessarily gonna stop there unless you call ahead and let us know, but you could call ahead and say, hey, I'm gonna be there every day for the next month, and they'll sort of stop, or you can flag us down. But we could certainly, certainly add that, and then, and then reevaluate based on, if nobody ever gets on there for a month, or two months, or three months, then what?
What stop, yeah. Yeah, unless there's somebody standing there waving a flag or something, yeah.
And we're going right on.
Yeah.
It's not gonna, you got more than I know.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully, you know, it's something everybody thinks about. It'd be nice to see people take advantage of it.
Yeah, and it's nice that it's being offered to, just to see.
Just to see, yeah.
Because it was talked about, so...
Yeah, we have got a few seniors in town. This is an aging town, I think, but, so it might be a nice thing to do.
So, as far as like a donation or a contribution, is there a timeline that would be helpful for you to, for each town to contribute that?
So, what usually happens is, we usually are put on the ballot for town donation, and, I think mostly the money usually starts filtering, you know, for like, you know, October, November, December, or something like that, from, from the year prior. Really, I'll take money anytime you wanna give it.
Okay, well, that's my point, I mean, because we do have a...
Yeah, I'm not, we can invoice you, yes, that's helpful.
Having an invoice would be helpful, just for the accounting and all.
Actually, we do invoice the town, so it's really, you know, it's not, if you're, we invoice you in January, say, after town, or March, or February, it's not like you're getting a collection.
But it sounds like this will start up though in, in a few weeks, actually. Well, um, what we'll do is, uh, we'll have this on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yeah.
And, uh, we probably shouldn't make a decision, we just lost one of our select.
No, I appreciate you just hearing that, so thank you.
Yeah, I like it. I think it's long past due. I know a lot of people, I work in the village and there's a lot of people that struggle to get into the town. Hopefully they'll take advantage of it now that it's out there, so.
Well, you want them to do a petition? Or would you want to just put that in your plan if you decide to? Because for CBTA, we made them do a petition, or at least they did a petition originally.
Originally, yeah, so we would, what, what we might do is at the next select board meeting, we'll discuss this and maybe make a contribution, um, uh, soon, this year, this fiscal year. And then we would have it on our town meeting, um, agenda, um, you know, the appropriation listing, which you would need to submit, um, a request for.
Be a one-time request or do it every year?
No, it would just.
It's a petition for like 35 signatures in one year. The alternative is you could just put it in, but you don't have to consider them as a nonprofit charitable organization. But it's a thing. They are a little different.
So do you want a petition or just, or just a letter of claim or request?
But it, we'll figure that out and let you know.
Okay. We were used to.
Yeah, this is a good thing. It's, I don't want to make them jump through hoops myself either. So this is a, this is a good positive.
We talk a lot, we talk a lot, and GMT about the, if you're requesting $500, what does it cost them to get a petition? Is your money being used to provide the service or is your citizen's money being used to send people out? To fill out a petition?
Petition, you know, what has happened for some groups in the past is that they, they write it and then the town works to get the signatures. And that's what I would imagine would happen in this case. We do now have, um, a town meeting appropriations policy, which kind of requires that any new group, um, go through the petition process. So we should probably follow that, but we can.
Seeing how we made it up.
If you wrote it, if you wrote petition, we would do the groundwork to get this.
Can we talk to all the other towns in the North East Kingdom to be the same?
So were you the first on the list of towns you're working with or where?
Yeah, for the, for this group, for this group, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I like it. I don't think we'd have any problem getting signatures.
No.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, so I guess if you could get petition together, just asking for the appropriation.
Yeah, for, this would be for our next fiscal year.
Till '21.
'21, yeah. And, and we will discuss making a contribution as a select board for this fiscal.
Okay, great, thank you.
So this says then when you're starting this?
Um, it's scheduled to start on October 7th, so we're cramming right now to.
Do you have a contact, like a card or anything?
Um, I don't have a card, but, yeah, there is. We're, we're rebranding and we have a new logo and color, so I didn't want to spend any money to redo our.
You're not going to be the Ruby?
We're no longer going to be the Ruby in the Kingdom. Oh, that's.
Where are you going to be now?
It stands right out. Our new tagline is communities are middle name. Because it is. Yeah, but the Ruby's out the window. No one knew what the Ruby in the Kingdom was anymore.
Norman, I didn't see you sitting in there, you snuck in. Anything you'd like to ask them or?
Well, no, I, I just saw that, that energy piece was on the agenda as well. It was about, so I thought I'd find out.
That's next on the list. So I think we're, more questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And thanks for getting this started and I hope it, I hope it's successful.
Yeah, you too. Enough people have talked about it, hopefully they'll take advantage of it now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Norman, you're up next.
I guess, um, as a member of the planning commission, um, Iowa, it is past 6:30, so.
Skip isn't here yet?
Yeah, I sort of assumed that he would come, but, um, he's not here yet. But I know what this is about and I am a member of the planning commission. He's now the chair.
Okay.
But, um, so we were approached, um, the town, approached by the town planning commission originally, was approached by Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. They are doing, um, energy plans for a group of towns through some kind of block grant. I don't know much about the background detail of it. But one of the towns has dropped out, so they're working on this and they had an opening for another town. So we were approached about it. And both Skip and I thought it was a good idea. We did talk about the planning commission, because, because at this point, um, having an energy component in your town plan, most towns are working on that. And there's two different reasons for that, but, um, and I'll just get into that in a minute. But, so this basically would not cost the town a cent.
Okay.
And the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission would work to put together the energy plan based on the regional plan. Um, and then the planning commission would work with the Regional Planning Commission to kind of form it to, Woodbury would probably do some, um, you know, a public hearing, I think.
Question, do you?
Sure.
What's an energy plan?
Okay, so the energy plan, basically the main reason the towns are putting together energy plans is, so that the town has some input. This is pretty much all for renewable energy. And so the town has some input on where there might be places in town to cite something. Um, and also places in town where the town would not want something to be cited. So that if somebody, a developer goes before the Public Service Board and has a proposal for a series of windmills along the Woodbury Worcester Elmore Ridge on the western part of town, you know, the town would have, had, already had a kind of a say in what they, it might help, it might not. So that, that's the basic reason. My understanding of an energy plan is to, to have public input on where places for some type of renewable energy might be cited and also places where, um, things would not, we would not want to have places cited. And I know in the regional, the Regional Planning Commission has put together a regional energy plan and, um, there's a good part of Woodbury that is for different, there are different criteria for not citing something. And most of Woodbury is, fits some or two or three or more criteria for not citing something. So, um, you know, just based on the regional plan. But the state is also asking each town to take on responsibility for this kind of 2050, you know, everybody having, you know, renewable energy, that each town take on some responsibility for the citing of, of renewable energy.
So would this have some impact on people wanting to put solar on their houses or put up a windmill in their backyard? Is that what this is about saying yay and nay to them about that?
Well, that, um, no, that, I don't think it would so much cover individuals like, um, it would be more.
Municipal place?
Municipal, you know, if, if the town would have, wanted to cite a place or if there was a developer that want to, might want to approach the town or, I suppose, a property owner, um, you know, it would be more large-scale. And, you know, large-scale is pretty, from pretty small, large-scale to, to huge. I think it would cover more of that. The restriction, my understanding of the restriction now for somebody doing their own home, solar panels or a wind generator is more having to deal with the utility that would, if it was a net metering system is, you know, whether the, the local utility, which is mostly hardwood electric, you know, a little bit of Washington electric. They have limits on how much they can accept, which is usually set by the legislature here. So, so that tends to be the factor there.
If you're going to do your own, you've got to go off-grid because you can't sell the power back to.
Yeah, you know, going off-grid, I don't, there really isn't any issue. I know that right now there isn't anything in the town zoning ordinance about that. And in the regional plan, I don't think it really, I don't think it really covers individuals off, off here. But I, you know, I don't know for sure, I haven't read the whole of the regional energy plan. So the, the planning commission was asking the select board for approval to accept having this, you know, becoming part of this group grant to have the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission work up an energy plan for the town. This would dovetail with the work that they will be doing for the town in creating a town plan for us. This will become a, a component of that. And that part we are paying a, a small match for, but this part would be basically already paid for.
Yeah.
You know, I could try to find more information about this, um, if we thought that would be helpful.
Sound like a good idea?
Of course, as, as far as I'm hearing about this specifically, I'd be, I wonder, I'd be interested in, um, the town that dropped out and why they did. How come?
Yeah.
You know, um.
I don't know the answer to this.
Which, which town dropped out and why?
Yeah, I mean, that's information I'd want to know, because maybe there's a good reason not to do this. Um, I'm a little concerned about what you mentioned in terms of, uh, the regional plan has Woodbury as mostly not being a place where you can do things as opposed to where you can and what criteria were involved in that, how come that is. Because then if they put that together, we can expect a plan that they're going to generate would be similar.
It would be similar.
And, um, uh, so, and it's all in the details.
Right, and I could, I could, I have, I think I have a copy digitally of the regional, um, energy plan, um, which I could send to you.
Sure, I'd take a look.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they, um, and I'd, I'd like to see, so there was some kind of grant involved for them to do this work. I would like to see what was in, in the grant, what the scope of work is. What are they going to do to come up with this? Um, to see if it's, uh, you know, a reasonable approach that allows people to pretty much do the things they want to do in this regard without undue restriction. And, which I think is a general Woodbury's approach to things, you know, unless there's a serious reason to prevent it, people should be allowed to do stuff. I think that's a general approach that towns take on most things. So we'd want that to follow, so we, so anyway, those are question marks and the answers may be just fine. I just don't know. But those are the questions that come to mind.
Okay. I can, um, I will contact the person that's overseeing this and give these list of questions to, or I can send you the regional energy plan. I'm pretty sure I have it on my computer.
Yeah, of course, it might be on their website too.
Right, and it is on their website.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then just ask these, um, you know, three questions that you brought up, which town dropped out and why? You know, what is the grant source? Is it federal, I think it's a federal grant? And the scope of work? And then, um, just types of individual property owner restrictions that might be part of the regional plan? Is that what you're thinking of and how that would affect, uh, resident, town residents?
Yeah, I'll just, well, it's just a question mark, I don't know what it says.
Okay, and I don't know what it says.
Well, I'm just keying off what you said, that was pretty restrictive in terms of not allowing.
Well, it was, it was more, um, the, the, you know, the regional plan was kind of based on, um, I think it was state criteria, um, you know, like the fact that a large part of Woodbury is forested. There was no reason. And, um, and, you know, and then Wetlanear is, you know, that's another.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that.
That is an altitude, yeah.
Mostly all related to poverty, which is particular to Woodbury, in my, in my memory.
Yeah, like I said, Mauma makes perfect sense, I just don't know if that's.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, like I said, I'd be curious as to how come someone would think that would make sense.
Yeah. And there, they do clearly have a map, um, showing, you know, color-coded of different areas and.
Yeah, there's altitude, the forested areas, white lines, that's one of the things that, as we know, are not very developed.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But it does also require there is one, there is.
And there will, you know, there, in, I assume that in this, that there will also be, as in any part of the town plan, there'll be time for, you know, public hearings and town inputting.
Yeah, but each step will become a little more difficult to deal, so.
Yeah.
It's good to, um, make sure it's on the get-go and try to fix things down the road.
Yeah.
I think, usually.
Yeah, usually, yeah.
I mean, it works.
You know, another question I'll ask is, um, you know, obviously we're, we'll be having the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission put this together, but then do we, you know, there is an approval process through the whole town plan? I assume that this will be a part of the town plan, that they go through all of those steps for.
I think that's required now, isn't it? How about?
The energy plan is not required, it's highly, uh, recommended.
Okay.
But, um, and I would imagine very soon that it will be required.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of developers, you know, um, would rather understand the rules of the game, you know? If, if they're, you know, looking to do some solar or wind or whatever, uh, they're going to do it and they, you know, having the town having thought it, things through a little bit and they know, you know, what's acceptable and what isn't, rather than going through a more difficult process, you know, works best for everybody, so it's possible, it's all perfect and it's great, but we just want to do due diligence and check into it, that's all.
Sounds, sounds good. You know, and of course, the other, the other side of the, the reason that it is so strongly recommended is that if a town doesn't have an energy plan, there is a developer that would like to try to do something and, um, there's, you know, the developer has a little bit easier way with the Public Service Board to have something like that happen with, whether the town objected or not.
I don't know, I think the, the Public Utilities Commission, they came from the board now, would give deference to, you know, they would certainly pay attention if the town had something riding about. It would make it, make sense, all around like that.
Well, I will, um, I know the person to contact, uh, who's overseeing this and I'll, I'll send her those questions and I will CC you on it. And we could wait to make a decision on this. I don't think there's, um, I can check and see, I don't think there's a, um, an emergency to.
Okay, get an answer on it?
Get an answer on it, but, um. Paul might still be back tonight. Right. Or, you know, we could give the go-ahead and just try to get answers to these questions and then have them be concerned, so. But can't hurt, why don't we ask the questions and we'll, we'll have this on the schedule for the next meeting? Thanks, Norman.
Thank you, Norman.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I guess, I'm ready for the town treasurer. Randy, we're all set for the town treasurer.
Hello, hello?
Hello.
Are you the options of a heard or a sought?
Yes, take this off, chair, I was.
That was she financial statement. That was she financial statement and due to. Property tax, dog license money, land records recording, land records copies, fault fees, zoning permits, copies at cost, and then the transfer, we transfer over to records restoration. The percentage, the $4 of each. Delinquencies, we took in $3,524.57, now giving us a grand total of $41,393.30.
Total of, that's what we've collected, or that's still what's out?
That's what's outstanding.
Yeah, 41 grand.
So for the last two weeks, I have transferred $238,000 over to the money market from the checking.
The others. That's our mistake for the year.
So you saw our first payment for the low pro was cut for October 1st. So to finish off September, I will have the library payroll, another 941 to do, or a federal tax deposit, the VEMRs to finish off the month. So, yeah, I'll be cutting those next week. Other than that, town will be coming in to do the quarterlies in October, bank racks, and, yeah, the money is flowing in good.
Good. So we're not into the penalty phase yet for taxes, property taxes, are we?
No, I got it.
Oh, yeah. So that's come in really well, property taxes?
Pre, well, I say prepaid, but yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, when is, the deadline is October?
24th.
24th, yeah. So, a few more weeks. Did you, I put little post-its on a few things.
I saw those, yep. So Hardwood Electric, we'll get in touch with.
Okay.
And then you had wrote as far as the underground. I don't know if it's gonna be a portion, or since it's not completed.
What I'll do is, there's a person that I've been communicating with about the underground storage tank, and I will ask, and, you know, knowing that we are moving that tank, you know, within.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year, and hopefully within a month or so, whether we need to pay that fee for, I mean, it's a small amount to be paid.
Right, right.
But if we can not pay it.
Yeah, we don't need to, when I can void the check and.
Yeah, so hang on to that just a little bit. I'll call them tomorrow, have some time in the afternoon, so.
Do they have a date that that tank may come out yet?
Well, we're gonna talk about that. Yeah, we're getting closer to knowing what to do. It'll pretty much depend on when the above-ground tank can be delivered, and I haven't got an answer to that, yeah.
Okay. So that'll get delivered first, filled, and then we'll?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how, because ideally, it would be nice to put the above-ground tank where the underground tank is, so whether, maybe, you know, so we'll schedule the removal of the tank based on when the above-ground tank can be installed.
They might be able to bring you like what they call a skid tank, which is like a five-by-five tank that's temporary.
Yeah, we might go work something like that out, or they could buy diesel fuel.
So our new tank, is that gonna be setting on a concrete slab?
Yes, yeah.
So the old tanks have to come out, and we gotta pour a concrete slab? Okay, so it's not?
So it's a process, yeah, it's a process, yeah. Yeah, and I just discovered there's like a 25-page thing about above-ground storage tank rules, which I haven't read yet. I did print one out, so, but I, you know, I mean, we can, we could talk about that now. I have contacted three contractors who would oversee the removal of the underground storage tank, and I'll call it the decommissioning of the tank, cleaning it, and then I've also contacted two companies that would, that we could hire to put in the above-ground storage tank if we choose to not have Gillespie's put it in. The auditors are having a little bit of a connection over making a five-year commitment to Gillespie's, so I thought what I would do is do due diligence to get estimates from contractors who could install a tank at all at town expense, and then we would have control over the yearly bidding for the diesel fuel, which is what they're worried about. There is a zero-interest loan that we can get from the state for both the removal of the underground storage tank and the placement, installation of, and purchase of an above-ground storage tank. So depending on what the cost would be, I know I've been told that a new double-wall above-ground storage tank would cost $2,800. So, you know, what it would cost to have it installed, whether they could use the pump, you know, that's on the underground storage tank, you know, so maybe we have parts that could be used for the other.
So they would prefer that we go this route instead of letting Gillespie?
The auditors, I haven't, you know, I couldn't, you know, I had said that I would ask for their blessing, and it was an email from Skip just before I came down, that said that the auditors really don't wanna be in a position of blessing our deaggression from the purchasing policy. However, it is just a policy, and if we feel that it's the best route for the town.
Diesel's never been locked in, nobody will lock it in.
Right, yeah, yeah. So Gillespie, since they've entered the bidding process, they have been the cheapest price each year, is that true?
For oil and propane.
For oil and propane, yeah, so.
Yeah, we're pretty.
No place will lock in diesel since it's.
Right, yeah, so they have, you know, been.
I'd still go that way myself.
I would prefer that.
Yeah.
Is there an urgency to?
Yes, it has to be, we have to get that tank out of the ground as soon as possible. Obviously, in another month or two months, the ground's.
So it's not something you can put in the town?
No, no, I mean, the ground's gonna be frozen, you're not gonna be able to remove it on underground tank.
Yeah.
So there is an urgency, yeah, winter, you know, winter is our, our deadline, so.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have a problem trusting this company myself, so.
Okay, all right, well, that's why I was hoping that Paul could be here to, for that. But we can, when he gets back, if he gets back, we can talk about it some more.
Yeah.
But that's kind of what's happening with the, with the tank. And, you know, well, I want Paul here for these other, these loan things, too. Like, I also want you here, too, so, 7:00, we'll give them half an hour.
Do you wanna keep these for the minutes?
Sure.
As far as the amount?
Yeah, yeah.
And I can just step back?
Okay, yeah, we'll let you know when we get there, which, you know, we'll probably get there pretty quickly, actually, because we're getting down on this. Good, so, this was another thing I was hoping that Paul would be here for, but I can pretty much explain the situation. So for the emergency generator, we had talked about this a little bit in the past. Right now, the transfer switch, which would basically be kicked in if there was a power outage, the transfer switch is manual. So in the past, let's say there's a snowstorm, it's middle of the winter, it's 20 below, and the power goes out, Larry Eldredge would come down and manually.
I always thought we had an automatic come down.
No, we don't, no, it's a manual. So he would come down and flip it, so the generator would kick in and keep the pipes from the school from freezing. So, of course, he's retired now, and he has been urging the town, we talked about it last year a little bit, that we put in an automatic transfer switch.
Yeah.
So I called Brookfield Services to get a sense of how much it would cost. It would cost the town somewhere between $2,000 and $2,500 for them to come and put in an automatic transfer switch.
Where would it be, without the generators? Like the fire station?
I think it would be, the manual switch is on a pole outside the building, so I imagine that that's where the automatic switch would be.
And just change one.
Yeah, change one after the other. One question that the Brookfield Services had was whether, you know, the school was a 200-amp setup or a 400-amp setup, and my guess was that it was 200 amps. Larry thought that that was probably true, he was gonna check and find out.
Yeah.
The guy from Brookfield Services said that often if there wasn't, say the school had electric heat, chances are it would be 400 amps.
Yeah.
So, and I haven't heard back from Larry, but that, if it was 400 amps, it would probably be around $4,000 for this transfer switch.
Okay, and he's calculating in the fire station as well?
Yeah, the transfer switch would work for everything.
Everybody, yeah.
We could see if the fire department would be willing to be the person to come and manually do the switch. You know, somebody would have to be responsible, not that Larry doesn't wanna be.
Definitely be easier just to have it be automatic.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, too.
Eliminate.
If it is some other type of emergency where the power goes out and the fire department is dealing with other stuff.
Yeah.
You know, this would save them having to worry about that.
Yeah, unless the switch is right in near fire department.
Right, yeah.
And it'd be the only way, yeah.
So, and we could use what's left in the school fund to pay for it.
Okay.
You know, that would be another expense that we could draw from. Or, I'm sure we could, you know, probably find the money out, also, but I know the money's there for that, and it would just be.
That'd be the right way to go.
Yeah, okay. So I'll make a motion. I would make a motion that we contract with Brookfield Services to put in an automatic transfer switch for the emergency generator at the school with the estimated price, and we could wait, well, with the estimated price of between $2,000 and $2,500, and that we use funds in the school, is it just called the school fund at this point, school building fund? That we use those funds to pay for it.
And I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, good, okay.
Yeah, that one's done now, we can get that one.
Yeah.
Or we're done. Because I don't know how busy they are, but it needs to get us on the books, so.
Yeah, it's on the books, correct. So I put the animal control officer on our agenda, pretty much the problem is solved. But just to review it for the public record, our animal control officer, Kim Silk, his dog had an incident with a neighborhood dog, and Kim was very upset about it and felt that it might reflect it badly on him as an animal control officer, and also he was worried about the incident and the fact that it was his dog, that it would become a liability for the town. So I contacted Kim and we talked about it a little bit, and I told him that I didn't feel that it, that so far, we hadn't heard anything from anybody about this incident, and that I didn't feel that it really was a liability to the town, it was something that happened between him and a neighbor.
Yeah.
And also, the fact that he took care of it in a very responsible way also reflects on, you know, the animal control officer setting a good example for everyone else. And, you know, I also mentioned that his work as the animal control officer has definitely been of benefit and an asset to the town. So he said that he would talk to his neighbor to see, and I'm not sure what he had to talk to the neighbor about, but that's what he felt he should do. He did talk to the neighbor, and everything seemed okay there, so he felt that he could continue as the animal control officer.
Okay.
So I left him a message saying that, that, thank you, or this is great, and that I would discuss this at our select board meeting, and that I felt that the rest of the select board would feel the same way. I mean, I've heard.
Yeah, heard from all of us, yeah.
So I will let him know that, you know, he has, still has the select board's support, and that if he feels that it would be necessary for him to be reappointed, and we discussed that earlier, you know, as the meeting started, that because we never really see, received a formal resignation and passed that, that I don't think that's really necessary.
But he's still.
He's still the animal control officer.
Okay, good.
So, let's see.
You kinda skipped over me.
We did, right. Would you like to come next? Good, because you need to fill in the time here.
We're gonna wait until after 8:00, unless you're.
Right. How could I have done that?
I'm sitting quietly in my corner, Randy can save me. I don't know, what do you wanna know?
When's the store coming down?
Ah, see, next one.
Can I write that down here as a for sure?
No. You don't write it, but we'll make a difference.
I overheard you mention there's another snag, but.
Well, what I'm waiting for now is.
Thunder?
Yeah, Lauren Oakes was gonna write another purchase and sale agreement, and that was like, when did we get that email out? I think three weeks ago.
And you mentioned it in our last select board meeting.
Yeah, still waiting for that, so I emailed again.
Okay.
And I think she also needs to, she also needs to approve the deed, but Sarah Field says she's ready to go to a closing. I tried to do an email to both of them, so hopefully, hopefully, they would like talk to each other, although I would still like to be in the middle of that.
Yeah. We're still hoping for something to happen this fall?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah. We have another, the Phase 1 environmental site assessment, which we have to have done again, is only good for six months, and so if we don't get the property ownership, I think it's October 16th, then we'll be another, but the full Phase 1 and Phase 2 stuff really wasn't FEMA stuff, it was really state stuff to qualify us for the soil removal and all that stuff. But, you know, the clean site layer was really the only part that FEMA was concerned with, so everything that went before that was state.
Well, maybe if we're close to that, they could grant us an extension or something.
Maybe, or maybe it doesn't.
Or maybe we could not even worry about it.
Yes, yes. It's kind of been out there on the horizon, just waiting.
Waiting, 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 answering questions to people. It's funny how many people don't even pay attention and don't know that this has all been going on for five years.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen with that storage? So in the meantime, we have an estimate for a loan from the Union Bank, $150,000, we thought would cover everything, we probably won't need that much, but it's a line of credit, not a revolving line of credit, but a line of credit.
So all that was to get the deed?
No, with it, yes, exactly, yeah, we'll have to have that.
Allow us to purchase that property.
So there'll be a big, big chunk to purchase the property and another big chunk to do the demolition, and then, you know, $2,000 here and there for other things. So Union Bank is our regular bank, so we didn't go out the bid, but I figure, you know, at 1%, even if we borrow the money for half a year, the, might be less than $1,000 worth of interest.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that myself.
Yeah.
So we got the money's ready to get started on this as quick as possible.
Exactly, yeah.
We're running out of time, yeah.
Yeah, and at one point, Lauren Oakes mentioned getting the money, she said it would take another week or so to get the money for FEMA, and all along, they've been saying that this is a reimbursement, so I don't even wanna wait the extra week or two to get the money, it depends on the reimbursement.
Yeah.
So what we have here is, thanks. So, what we have here is, Union Bank is pleased to offer the following terms for a grant anticipation note to satisfy $210,000, which is literally the total, more than the total, but the loan amount would be $150,000, the loan date, September 24, and maturity date, January 24, that should be fine. Payment, principal plus interest due at maturity, no penalty for prepayment, tax exempt. In the event the town accepts the terms of this bid, the following loan documents will need to be executed by the select board, which are all here, the note, resolution, IRS form 8538G, tax certificate of your brandy, no, but I'll add this, signed acceptance of Union Bank's proposal letter, and then we have to give them a copy of the original warning, which I hope this tonight will, and a copy of select board minutes, awarding a bid to the Union Bank, most recent annual report, and a copy of the grant award letter, which we've already given them. Please undertake your acceptance, well, she wrote this to me, so I guess I'll sign this one, but the grant acceptance, grant anticipation borrowing resolution, you have to sign. You want me to read this? It's a lot of whereas and...
First off, cell standard whereas is right up.
Select board are authorized and empowered to borrow money on the credit of the town in anticipation of the receipt of a grant from hazardous litigation program, blah, 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 kind of a very, at a meeting here held on September 23, which is today.
Good.
And so on and so forth. So, that's one thing that has to be signed.
Okay.
Then we have a grant anticipation note that needs to be signed. I'm going here for both of you, I don't, it seems like it was cut off, so I'll have to find out if Randy and I have to sign that also. Grant anticipation borrowing tax certificate, select board are majority, and treasurer sign that one. Municipal bond post issuance compliance procedures, I don't think, this isn't a bond, so I don't think we're going to be able to do that.
Okay.
Who wants to start?
So, let's make a motion first.
Good idea. Okay, all right.
So, I would make a motion that we open a line of credit loan with the Union Bank for $150,000 for the Overberry Store Hazard Mitigation Grant expenses.
Second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Okay, so...
So, now we'll sign.
The resolution, the resolution is the first thing. So, I put my word in.
Hopefully. I borrowed this pen from you.
I thought it was missing.
I forgot my blue pen.
Oh, right.
Would you like it back?
Randy?
You have to keep track of it when he leaves, so...
Right.
I found this one out there too, someplace.
That's a freebie.
That's a freebie.
And then we have grant anticipation note, as I said, you guys can sign on one, two lines, and I'll see if there was maybe another package. And this one is a tax certificate for grant anticipation borrowing. The notice being issued for the purpose, for the purpose, the acquisition and demolition of a property located at 365, so I'm not much of a... Treasurer.
It's the end of our summer.
Really?
Went out with a bone nose in the leg yesterday.
I think that's it. Randy can fill out this part.
I think it's just a signature. She had already digitally written her own.
So, we'll have the minutes, that it can be included for that.
And you kept the, the agenda?
Yeah.
I had the agenda on there.
Oh, you did that, I would have just... Funny, just to... New text, so, that'll get us going.
Moving forward again.
Forward stop, forward stop, forward stop.
Any other town clerk things for us?
Well, I finished the purging of the checklist by Sept, I came in, fortunately, I came in Friday, and I didn't realize that that was the last day for letting the, oh, yeah, the 20th was the last day for sending a letter to the Secretary of State saying that I did that, so I did that, but most of the letters came back anyway.
Did you have to purge many of them or...
We don't, we can't actually purge them unless they write back and they say we can purge them, or if they don't, we have to wait two years before we can purge them, so...
So, you have them on a special list?
Right, right, challenged is what they call them. And they still can vote if they show up, but they have to prove that they actually do still with here. And there are some of them we probably could track down with their current address, find new addresses.
Yep.
And all that, yeah.
That's good.
Okay, yeah, some of the funny other stuff going on, day to day. Okay.
All right, thank you. So, why don't we, Susan?
Hi.
Can you tell us why, why you were here?
Yes, I...
That'll help us determine what the...
Sure, I would like to thank you both for doing such a great job as select board members.
Aw.
I don't, you know, I don't think you can thank you enough, I really don't, and sitting here, I'm just like, thank you, you guys are really doing a great job. I'm sorry Paul's not here, but I understand there's a car accident down the road.
He's out there, maybe he's somewhere else.
Yeah, and I'm also here to let you all know that we need pies and people for Bessie Drennan coming up this week here in Woodbury, and to be sure to call me or Carolyn Stewart or somebody to offer to help or make pies or soups, that would be wonderful.
Steve told me he's not going to be there this year to do the dishes.
So, would you like to join us?
I would not like to, no.
Well, my husband won't do it because he'd just drop every plate.
What, in Woodbury, for each form or whatever?
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, but I just, I'm here to also talk to you about the, the five-year grant, not grant, but the five-year term period of the tank.
Okay, we did just talk about that, but, before you came, but it was scheduled at 7:25, so, yeah, let me, let's, we'll go over, because, so, and it would be good to give you some of the background for why we're thinking of the five-year contract, so, let's see.
Well, I don't want to throw a wrench into your decision.
No, no, I'm just trying to think...
Because your decisions are usually good ones.
Okay.
I'm just concerned that it didn't go out to bed.
It may not have to, it may not be, this expense may not warrant, looks like it's going to fall between the $1,000 and $8,000 range, which means that we do have to contract, contact a number of contractors.
Right.
So, my thought was, you know, for tonight, and I think the select board, Paul, again, he wasn't at the last meeting, but Brian and I are kind of leaning towards this five-year commitment, but what I would like to do before we make that commitment is do due diligence to, to contract, contact, there are no, I was given names of two contractors that install above-ground storage tanks, and I called them and left a message, and I haven't heard back from them, I did that this afternoon, so they haven't really had a chance to call me back, but I'd like to get a sense of how much it's going to cost the town to purchase and install a tank on their own, and then we'll have a figure of how much that would cost the town. I know, I've been given a figure of $2,800 to purchase a tank, this would be a double wall above-ground tank, but then there's the installation cost, so I want to try to get two estimates from these two contractors. I have gotten, I have contacted and spoken with three contractors that would oversee the removal of the underground storage tank. Basically, what happens then is that somebody has to be there to watch the actual removal, and our road crew would excavate it and remove it, but somebody has to be there to make sure there's no contamination and blah, 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 I don't know what all the requirements are.
Is there a health officer like yourself that's going to be there?
Well, this, the person, the environmental group that would be overseeing it would be, have all the knowledge that they would need to make an assessment.
When the tanks were removed up at the old store, Brad Wheeler was the environmental consultant who oversaw that, and so...
And then the same contractor would then take the tank, open it up, and do an official cleaning of it, removal of any of the remaining diesel fuel, and the plan is to have almost all of the fuel out except where you might start getting sludge on the bottom of the tank.
And is there a salvage value to that tank?
It would basically be scrap metal, so it would probably get thrown in the cup of soup pile on the town, and I can explain that if you want.
There would be a value if we didn't decommission it.
Right.
But decommissioned it, its only value is its weight.
Yeah, it's basically scrap metal, but they would, they would remove any sense of contamination so that it could be, go to scrap metal, and we wouldn't have to pay, you know, for a special hazardous waste.
Just got to...
So, there's no salvage value in that?
Uh, no.
No?
Is that maybe not for a culvert or anything?
Probably too small for a culvert, too short.
It's too small, too short.
It might be worth if we held it up to all metals, 25 bucks or something.
Well, that's what the road crew, that's what the road crew would do, they have a pile of culverts, all the old metal culverts that they remove.
Put them there, yeah.
And they save them up, and then they bring them in and get money, scrap metal money, and then they buy their cup of soup for winter, winter planning.
I think some of the private roads, like the one we live on, could certainly use a few culverts, I didn't know that, Bob's been looking for...
Well, these culverts that are in the scrap pile are, I mean, you're welcome to go up and look at them, but they're pretty well rusted out, and they're pretty much trash.
Get pieces, you know, you might got to cut off an end and...
But we could, you know, the road crew would be glad to save those that are actually...
Yeah, I'm sure they do, save the ones that are still reusable. Sometimes they're too big for a road like your Camaro or something.
And they have been, some people have taken them for driveway access, or, so they do get, the ones that are in decent shape, yeah. So, and with the town, so for removing the tank, there is a zero-interest loan that the town can take, and we probably will do that, it's going to cost roughly about $2,200 to remove the underground storage tank, between this paying the site assessment person to be there, and for them to clean the tank. And then, but this 0% interest loan will also pay for the, a new tank and for the installation. So, if we go our own route, we can finance it through a 0% interest loan from the state, this would be from the state.
How many years?
Probably no more than fines, seems to be the standard.
Depends on the amount, what was the amount?
It would depend on the amount that it costs.
It was $5,000.
And hopefully, you know, I don't, I don't have that figure out, that's what I'm trying to find from, so, and then there, you know, there are requirements, which I haven't researched yet, but I have printed out the booklet, the town, there are requirements in overseeing the maintenance and use of the above-ground storage tank, just like there is with the fellow. So, that would be one route for the town to, to find out how much it's going to cost to have a purchase and install an above-ground storage tank, and then decide whether we want to do that, and also get a better handle on what the town requirements would be to oversee.
I know the town is in good hands, so, thank you very much.
And the other route, and most towns do this, the other route is to have the fuel supplier supply the tank and do the installation, and also maintain it, and deal with all the regulations, so it would be, basically be, who we have to make, Gillespie's has asked for a five-year commitment, so that they don't put in the tank, and then next year we go with someone else, they would probably remove the tank, the tank basically would belong to them.
So, just wondering, after five years, would we own the tank then, or would they, we have to sign up for them again, or go through the whole thing again?
I don't know the answer to that question, but that's a good, good question to ask, so I can ask that question.
Good job.
So, so that's the two, those are the two scenarios, I think what we'll do is, we won't make a decision tonight, I'll get the figures, we do have a, kind of a time constraint in that, you know, this has to be done before winter.
I understand, and I think you're on a timeline that there's really no time to put it out for bids.
Right, and I don't think...
From what I understand, in bid making and receiving, et cetera, you just don't have the time to do that, and I understand that.
And I don't think the cost will be over $3,000, so I don't think that, you know, the purchasing policy, anything over $8,000, we have to do the official...
Official bid.
Official bidding, anything between $1,000 and $8,000, we can, you know, contact different contractors and get a price from them, and then go with the best price.
But that would just put a wedge in, you know, moving forward?
Well, that, I think I could have that within a couple of days, you know, of course, we can't make an official select board decision outside of an open meeting, but it might give us, well, so we'll make a decision at the next select board meeting, which will be October 14. I'll try to get a sense from the contractors of when they could do this, and if it, if it looks like it would be an imposition to them to not have a decision as soon as possible, we'll just schedule a special select board meeting for that decision.
Yeah, but it gets to be a time constraint.
Right, yeah, if it is, and of course, we have to coordinate with the above-ground people and the below-ground people, because, you know, the, the idea, the plan is to put the above-ground storage tank where the below-ground storage tank is.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it's been a good spot for one, two years.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's where we'll go, and I should have some figures, and I'll, I can't share those figures with everyone before the select board meeting, so we have a sense.
Good.
So, let's see, the Blueberry Hill folks are here, so let's let them have the floor.
See you later, bye-bye.
Oh, okay. I could briefly go over the winter road salt contract, but we're waiting for John. So, it's pretty much, so, last year, the state contract for road salt went to a company called Appalachia something or other, and they're based out of Pennsylvania, and they sent rates to the state and to the different districts, the V-Trans districts, for what they would charge for road salt, and they were awarded the contract this year also.
Yep.
So, last year, we were notified that the company, American Rock South, that we have bought road salt from for many years through, and then supplied by DuBois, contracting, that they didn't participate in the state bid for some complicated reasons, I'm not quite sure what, but, but they were also offering road salt to towns.
Yep, because we wanted to put them last year.
Yes, and last year they were substantially less than the state bid price.
Yeah.
And that's true this year too, so this year... So this year, for the Appalachia State bid for District Seven, which we're a part of now, is $89, and I also had a email.
That's a ton.
That's a ton, with a, with the salesperson from Appalachia bid actually now $90 a ton. And then I received a bid from, you know, American Rock Salt for $79 a ton.
Yeah.
Which is pretty much, it was, it's 50 cents less than what it was last year.
We're out of time.
So, um, I'm thinking that we probably want to go with the last bit.
Go with the last better, yes.
So I would make a motion that we award the 2019, 2020 Town Highway Road Salt contract to American Rock Salt for the price of $79 per ton.
What's up with that?
Hold a favor?
All right, okay.
And so we'll, um, let's see.
And they didn't get the state bid?
They didn't even.
Oh, they didn't try?
Didn't try. And it's, I, you know, they explained the reason last year, and the, yeah, it has something to do with the way the state is, is doing the, we're getting, you know, so just, they didn't want to do that, I guess, so.
Made it too complicated?
Yeah, they made it, basically that's, that's what, that's kind of the gist of it. So, but they, you know, and last year they did notify different towns, hope they were still supplying. So, um, I can sign this later and then fill out the estimated tonnage, whatever, and then we'll send this contract to, to American Rock Salt. So that's done. So, Blueberry Hill Road gravel repressed.
Yeah, stay mat actually, Michael.
Hmm?
Stay mat?
Stay mat, okay, well, that's, yeah.
And is that currently coming out of Frye's pit up in Danville?
It comes out from whatever pit it's available. There's like three different pits that they get it from.
Yeah, I saw some loads last week or the week before that were out of that pit, and they were really nice.
Okay, so what was the name of the pit? We can make a request.
I believe it's Frye's. It's up there, it's just low Danville.
Yep, there's two, either, usually comes from Frye's or Biggers, which has a different name now.
Oh, really?
Check A.
Yeah, so, but it depends on, and there's a third place that they also get it from. It depends on who has the available, um.
Material?
Material, yeah. So do you want one-inch stay mat or the three-quarter inch, one-inch stay mat that's the kind of standard?
Three-quarter to one would be fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, how many loads would you like?
How about a couple of tandem truck loads? Really, 16 yards or big trucks?
14 yards, for these trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that sounds good.
Definitely.
Okay, um, so, um.
I mean, we'd like to see more. We'd love to see three or four trucks up there, because that looked pretty hard this year.
All the roads have taken a beating with the, especially with the heavy rains that we had earlier this summer, yeah.
That's why I'm only asking for two.
So how are you guys going to spread it once you get it down?
Monty's going to use his York right on his truck.
Okay, so we need to spread it out pretty well then?
Well, he needs to hook his chains right. We need to have whatever driver is clear enough to do it. Now, would you be using the town's equipment?
Will we be using the town's equipment?
The town is happy to deliver the gravel. The road is really too narrow for the grader to do, to do a proper job on that. It's too hard for the grader to do.
It's difficult, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's what, as long as they back it up to the top of the hill and spread it, then they should be able to rake it, yeah.
Oh, you're requesting that the town rake it? Or was Monty going to do that?
Monty's going to do that, I suppose.
So we just got to drop it off for you?
Yeah, but don't dump it in a pile.
No, spread it.
Set the chains and spread it.
Spread it as he dumped it, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll try to pack it and.
Yeah, I think that's doable, um, I think as long as they're headed downhill when they lift up the body, it should be okay.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's where we need it the most. I mean, we're going to take care of the stuff up on top.
If you could mark the road beforehand, where you want the dump.
To start.
To start and, and then they'll work, and they'll, they'll do the best they can to have it there. It would be helpful for them to know.
For sure.
And I could ask Greg to just kind of eyeball the, what's, what it's like up there to see if you needed more, and he, and then, you know, they might supply you with more than two if they felt that it was needed.
Well, that'd be nice.
Okay.
Kind of appreciate it.
Okay.
Greg might look at his budget and say, no.
Well, he always does, but, um.
Then he finds a little room somewhere.
Well, there's still quite a bit of money left in the gravel budget for this fiscal year.
Oh, good.
So.
Potentially.
But, you know, there's always the, of course, next spring and more flooding and erosion is when the gravel, that's when the gravel really gets eaten up during mud season, and then, of course, this year with the heavy rains that we had, so.
It's doing one of them outside as we came here.
Right.
Yeah, it sounds like it's let up a little bit now.
Yeah, but, you know, this, we, this is kind of, we have a lot of people from different Class Four roads come in and request, and we have given gravel.
Everybody, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of the standard thing that we do.
And two loads has been the, pretty much the standard for everybody this year, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, so, so Greg will grumble, but if the select board has approved it, then he's okay with that. He's just worried about overspending his budget.
Right.
But, but, so I will, we'll do this officially, I'll make a motion that we give the Blueberry Hill Road folks at least two loads of gravel and with the discretion from our road foreman that if another load is required, that, that he can do that, yeah.
What's up with that?
Hold a favor?
All right.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
I will let Greg know this in the morning and I'll try to get, have an idea of when it would be delivered, so that you know and can stake out the spots.
I'll use some fluorescent flag, you know, I know.
Whatever, whatever, just so it's indicated to him. And then there, I assume that there's a place up at the, I mean, I've driven up to the top where the houses are, and there would be a place for the ten-wheeler to turn around up there. Greg probably knows that already.
Well, right now we dropped a couple of trees in it to give more clearance to lift the body up.
Oh, okay, well, that would, we appreciate it too.
And those guys might even just back right up from the bottom and drop it on the way down out.
They might, yeah. But I think there.
They should have plenty of room.
I think there's room up there for them to turn around too.
Yeah, may as do a few, few points on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think Greg is aware of the situation.
Yeah.
He's brought gravel there before, so, okay. So I will let you know when it will arrive.
Okay.
Try to let you know sometime tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. I have a statement.
Sure.
I'm going to pay, not pay my full tax this year for a reason.
Okay.
I think, you know, taxes, I noticed they were up this year, and I found the service to the roads has gone way down. Blueberry, Dog Pond Road, it's gravel, it's graded once the whole summer.
It's been graded more than once.
Huh?
It's been graded more than once. I travel that road every day doing Beaver stuff, and it's been graded more than once.
It has?
It has, and most of your taxes going up was because of the school merger. Was because of the school merger, the municipal tax did go up some, the town highway budget did go up some, but the majority of that rise in taxes came from the school tax, which the town has no control over, and most of that was because we're now paying for two other towns' worth of building, repair, et cetera, and school financing. So, the, the Woodbury actually did not benefit tax-wise from the merger, which was sort of the whole idea originally for the merger is to, we act, our taxes actually went up fairly significantly through the school tax.
All right.
Okay, so it's.
So you're saying, you're saying Dog Pond Road was graded more than once this summer?
More, you know, at least two or three or four times. In fact, it has just recently been graded.
All right, okay.
And I travel, I travel that road pretty much every morning, so.
I stand corrected.
Okay.
Gets a lot of traffic on it.
I mean.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic on it.
And the roads are pretty rough at the beginning of the summer, just because of the, these type of weather events. It was, you know, the road crew was trying to keep up with just fixing serious erosion on most of the hills. Dog Pond is nice, it's kind of leveled the whole way with a few little rises, but, so they were pretty busy elsewhere and may not have been able to keep up with the grading, you know, up until the middle of June, in June.
Okay, correct.
So go to the school board, the union district school board complaining.
That's like talking to a brick wall.
I know, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, yeah.
Night, John.
Good night. Have a good night, Randy.
Okay, um, let's see, so check that one off, done the underground storage tank, done the winter road salt. Okay, so, um, what do we do, the ones, I'm kind of feeling doubtful that Paul's going to make it, but, so, the Buck Lake Brook Caddo Road repair, so I have talked to the contractor, Darryl Matthews, we sent them a copy of the contract, they're going to, they hadn't, they read it over, no problems with it. He's going to sign it and send it to the town, and then the select board will sign it. And I also talked to him, it, it sounds like they had given in the bid an anticipated starting date of October 14th. They've been doing some extra work for Fish and Wildlife, so their anticipated starting date now is around the 21st of October. In the contract, we asked for a week's notification, so, and they'll try to give us, give us that. They anticipate four days of work.
Nice.
So, I also talked to him about the situation with the detour and, you know, if there might be an alternative, and Darryl Matthews did say that they could set it up so that there would be a lane available for, probably for residents only, and then we basically close the road up except for town residents. I talked to Greg about that a little bit, and, you know, when we were unsure on this would actually happen, Greg had the thought of putting some gravel, you know, where the, where the blocks are now on the side so that there would be more room like for power.
You should have built the road out further to the right on the way up.
So Greg is thinking that we could do that in addition to whatever, you know, Darryl Matthews, Matthews Excavating definitely would prefer just to have the road totally closed, but I, I don't see us resolving the situation with the detour in time. So, so what Greg and I were thinking was to have somebody from Matthews Excavating come where we could talk about having, you know, one lane open, how, how we would do that. Matthews Excavating said they could provide stop signs or blocks or, you know, whatever we might need for stuff like that.
Would that be an extra cost if they had to hire a guy to control?
It would be an extra cost, but the, the grant is for $150,000, and their bid was for $21,000, so we, we have some money to play with. But, yeah, I'm sure there would be some extra cost.
So they just hired somebody to.
So that's kind of what we're thinking of now, is to have, one, have the road closed to anybody who's a fleet peep, you know, or something like that, and then let all of the local residents who need to use that road to get from work to back home or vice versa, and let them know that there is a lane open and that they're, we use it. I've contacted the quarry, they're going to go out the Caddo Way until the work is done. So, you know, so things are moving along, and hopefully that'll, I think that'll work, that would be a nice alternative. We were, you know, Greg was saying, well, could we drive up through the cemetery and up on the Flat Street and around and.
No, myself would love that.
Yeah, sure would. So, so this is what we're, this is what we're going to try for. So that's pretty much it for that project. And then, just for some, you know, public statement on what's happening with the old quarry road, we, the select board had a special, a select board meeting to come up with a financial amount to offer the property owner, and we came up with $2,500 to offer, offer the property owner the purchase of an easement for the spur of road that connects the old quarry road with the Caddo Road. He, and then I, and I had said that I would call him and make that offer to him, which I did. He told me in a phone conversation that he thought it was a fair offer, but he wasn't ready to make a decision yet. So I told him that, you know, basically that we needed to have a decision soon, and he was pretty evasive about how, whether he would be able to do that or not. So I pretty much told him that we were, we were going to be continuing with the hearing that we had already scheduled. So, about four days later, he closed off the spur again, and I had asked him not to do that, but for what that's worth. So at this point, the spur is closed off, and there's no, you know, we really aren't going to be able to use that road for accessibility.
And the stop sign?
The stop sign is right out here.
He took out the stop sign?
He took out the stop sign.
Right down here?
Yeah, it's meaning against the town office. I'll have the road crew pick it up, or we could leave it there. So we will proceed with the hearing, and I have more to discuss about that in executive session, which we will share with, in the open meeting after our executive session. So that's part, sort of where we stand with the old quarry road. You know, we looked, there is the other spur that's right beside that, and then it angles off before it hits the Caddo Road. We thought, well, we could, we could just repair that, and so I had asked the property owner, you know, if we repaired that, would that be okay with you? And his reply was that, you know, that that's really not the best solution, that it's dangerous, and if we were to do that, he would want to be able to tell us what to do, because it's his property.
Which is, this is the same property owner you're talking about?
Same property owner, yeah.
No, okay.
The spur, the old spur, which was used by the town for many, many years, is beside the new one, but it does, you know, as it gets to the Caddo Road, it does hear off, and it's very, there's a very steep bank there. It was a hazard, that's why, yeah, and the spur that is there now was built right after Hurricane Irene in anticipation of the Caddo Road being closed to, you know, put in that big box culvert that's there. So Laura has been doing some research on, on the new spur, and we do have the FEMA report with the materials and stuff, and, but it doesn't really, there's nothing that really specifically addresses the spur, so it just addresses the repair of that, the whole road and the old quarry road, which was pretty much brought back up to a Class Four standards for the, when it was used as a detour. So, we are doing more research into the spur, because there is a, kind of a dispute over who actually did the building of it, but that might be a moot point, really, and that would be good for us to have that information, but that might not be necessary. We won't know until we get there, so we will continue.
So the hearing on October 9th will probably go ahead?
Yes, there's no, that's going to go ahead.
Yep.
As planned.
And that's at the town hall at?
We'll meet at the town hall at 11:00 AM. We'll conduct a site visit, so we'll go up to the spur, and people can ask questions, try to get a brief history, and then the actual hearing will occur at, in the town hall after that. And we will have our town lawyer, Paul, who will be representing the town in the hearing. The select board is the panel judge, so, which still seems kind of strange, but.
So who's going to represent the town in asking?
The town lawyer will.
The town law, okay, Paul will.
So is he also going to, like, run the hearing?
No, I guess probably I will be running the hearing after being counseled by our town lawyer.
Maybe you could get our moderator to do it.
We could, that'd be nice, yeah. Yeah, I could ask him.
He probably would.
He'd probably, he'd definitely be better than me. So that's pretty much all I wanna say in open meeting about, um, that situation, and we will be discussing it a little bit further in executive session tonight. Um, and if there's anything, um, that we wanna share publicly about that, we will open up the meeting and, and do that after the executive session, and if no one's here to hear it, then it will be part of this. Okay, so, um, moving on to, um, the truck replacement, um, we again had kind of postponed this decision so that, um, we would have Paul with us, and we could do that again because technically we won't really need any, um, need to use the, the line of, um, credit option that we will, that we have kind of pre-arranged with the Union Bank until we, the actual cabin chassis arrive, a charred one, which would be sometime next summer.
Okay.
So we could put that off.
Just incurring that it's gonna be in the town report in the highway budget?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Does it take a little time for that, or do we need to do it tonight?
We need to do it before we put together next year's fiscal year.
So, you know, yeah, December, November, December.
If we could do it, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Next meeting. A bit early in the agenda.
Yeah, so I do wanna go over the, the burmer and mower, um, because we, there are two options that we can, we can go with the Union Bank, or we can pursue this, um, Vermont Municipal Equipment Loan through the State Treasurer's Department. So it'd be good to have Randy here to hear this, um, so we could just go over that, just for public knowledge of what those two are, um, and, um, so last, at our last select board meeting, we went over, um, the terms with the Union Bank for the, um, for the, what we call the burmer and the mower wood chipper, a wood brush hog, attachments that would go on the bucket loader. So with the Union Bank, we had asked for, um, a five-year loan term and a ten-year loan term, and we, I could go over those briefly, um, again, tonight, um, so the Union Bank with a ten-year, um, loan, um, term, that would require approval at town meeting in March, because, um, and it would be, the interest loan, the interest would be four point, four point five percent, the yearly, um, payment, um, on October first would be six thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents, the total interest that we would pay over the term of that ten-year loan would be thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-four cents. The five-year, um, loan with the Union Bank would be a three percent interest rate, um, and the yearly payment that we would be making, it could be made with select board approval and not town approval, um, and the yearly payment that we would be making would be eleven thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-three cents, and the total, um, interest payment that we would be making over that five-year loan term would be four thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventeen cents. So, and I know we had originally talked about trying to set up this loan so that we were basically paying about what we pay on an average yearly payment for renting the mower, um, so, um, the, the ten-year loan would be close, it would still be a little bit above, um, and then, of course, the, the downside of that is that over the term of the loan, the ten years, we would be paying, uh, a significant amount of money, almost fourteen thousand dollars for that loan. The five-year loan would be quite a bit more, it would be six thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars above, um, the forty-five thousand, forty-five hundred yearly, um, amount we pay for the mower, um, so, you know, we would have to budget, but there would be an increase in our highway budget to, to cover that, like six thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. The upside is, of that is, is that we would've spent far less, um, total interest for that loan. So this, um, municipal, Vermont Municipal Equipment Loan was, it was mentioned to us when we met with Dan Currier from the Regional Planning Commission, that the State Treasurer's Department offers this loan, um, for towns, for any, any equipment purchase, really, it could be a plow truck, it could be.
Really?
But when Dan mentioned to us, he said that it was a zero percent interest loan, which is, um, true, um, under certain conditions, um, but, and I have the, the application here with the terms, but basically the loan would be for no more than seventy-five percent, um, the, the amount that we would need, and, um, of course, the other thing that we were going to approve tonight was, um, using twenty thousand dollars of the HERF fund towards this equipment purchase, um.
So that gets us into the seventy-five percent?
No, because it would be, it would be, you know, so using twenty thousand dollars on, of the town, um, HERF fund would bring the total amount that we would be looking for in a loan down to fifty-one thousand dollars. So, um, this, this Vermont Municipal, the loan would pay us seventy-five percent of that fifty-one thousand dollars.
Why wouldn't they pay just seventy-five percent of the whole thing?
Of the total?
Well, we, we could do that.
Especially with zero percent.
And then, but then our yearly, okay, you know, I hadn't even had that thought, we, if we were to, and we could, we could play with the numbers for that, um, not right now, but anyway, um, so I had, I had based what we would be, what the loan amount that we would get from them would be thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, um, based on fifty-one thousand dollars, and then it has to be paid within five years, um, the town has to come up with a twenty-five percent upfront cost, which would be twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars based on the fifty-one thousand dollars, so if it's based on seventy-one thousand dollars, our upfront cost would be more, um, and then the yearly, um, payment would be probably more. And then the catch is, the only way you can get a zero percent interest rate is if two or more towns are involved in the purchase of the equipment.
Yep.
For a single municipality to do this, it's a two percent interest loan, and we're, you know, we're getting a three percent interest loan from the Union Bank, so it's not a huge difference. We could try to find out if Cabot or Callis or?
Did Laura or Randy mention anything about conversations with Callis? The fact that they are, they're, um, they have been hiring out their mowing every year to some, somebody who mows?
Right.
And their mowing person is retiring, so they're looking at purchasing a tractor to mow with, for like fifty thousand dollars or something, no?
No, I used one with the brush hog, the attachments, it was between seventy to eighty thousand, I used one.
Yeah. Okay.
So that was the question, is should we approach Callis and about sharing the building?
Or renting it from them?
Well, I've turned, I mean, I, I can see, I mean, we'd have to talk to Greg about this, but, you know, the sharing idea intrigues me, and we could benefit from this equipment loan if we were to do that.
Yeah, and they may not know about that zero percent.
You know, the, the main reason that Greg would like this piece of equipment is that then the town could mow pretty much whenever they needed to, and they could also chop brush anytime they needed to. Um, you know, with renting the mower, we basically have to.
Two-week span.
Two-week, one-week span, we have to, um, apply for it or, or ask for it like a year ahead of time, we got a specific time period, don't have really much choice on.
Radar sign, yeah.
Yeah, um, and then we have four, forty hours, basically, although this year I think they were allowed to run it as much as they could, it has been forty hours, so there's like this little window where they have the mower.
Yeah, yeah, this is interesting with Callis.
And if Callis was interested in, you know, so that we could use it some, they could use it some, and kind of go back and forth.
Might be a good idea for Greg to go down and visit with them.
Right, and then if, if the attachment would help address brush cutting, um, it would definitely, it does sound like it's worth pursuing, and, and maybe they would be interested in, um, doing this.
We don't really have a, a place to put a tractor, but maybe they do, I don't know what size their garage is.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, their, their garage isn't much bigger than ours.
But they're planning on getting it anyway.
Right, so maybe they're.
Whether we're involved or not.
We could ask, can't hurt to ask.
Call Denise.
Yeah, because again, there isn't, you know, the thought is, is to have this, of course, that wouldn't solve our problem with the burmer, but we could buy that outright from the HERF fund if we wanted, or we could take a smaller loan for the burmer.
Yeah.
Okay, well, um.
Maybe they'd be interested in a burmer as well.
True.
True, yeah.
I don't know how, how big this, this mower thing is as far as storing that.
Ah, yeah.
Smaller than a tractor.
Basically, you know, most of it is the boom arm, um, you know, and then the mower part is.
Yeah, we might end up having to put up another building or adding on something just to keep this under cover.
Yeah, I don't think we have pretty much room for that.
So, and again, there isn't, uh, we don't have to make this decision right off, I think it would be worth pursuing that, just as another option, just to do that due diligence.
Yeah, 'cause we're not, either one of us are not gonna use that thing a lot.
Okay, yeah, yep, so, um, the burmer, the catch with that is, is that that is made to attach on the front of a cat bucket or other, and I don't know what the.
Callis.
Callis has, but, um, we could find out, and Greg probably does know what they have.
Greg probably does know, yeah.
So, okay, so, um, we'll, and you know, but my feeling is with this Vermont Municipal Equipment Loan, if we go it alone, it's really not much of a deal for us, um, and the other part of it is, is that there's a deadline, there are two application deadlines, one is October fifteenth, which is coming right up, the other is in the spring, April fifteenth, you apply for it, and then there's a committee that decides whether or not you get the loan, so it's not a sure deal if we apply for it that we're actually gonna get it anyway. And I don't think it's really gonna, you know, if we were doing it, going alone, paying two percent interest, um, and we're paying, you know, could pay three percent interest with, I'm sure there is a, a difference, but, um, and I haven't done the math to figure out what that would be, but.
So even with the, sharing with the town, you still have this competitive?
Yeah, that would still be, yeah, and there are criteria, I mean, I have the application, it's based on need and, and these are, what's the criteria? Preference shall be given to joint applications, so, you know, if we're going it alone, that's, that's one, um, against us. Uh, let's see, criteria for making loans are equip, equitable geographical distribution, financial need, ability to repay, and, um, if a town had suffered some kind of catastrophe like the town garage bird and all the equipment on it with it, that would probably have you in their favor. So, um, so, okay, so let's, um, we'll pursue, see what, if Callis is interested in sharing, and then what that would entail, um, and, um, we'll come back next.
Next meeting, yeah.
Just fine, just fine, I mean, there isn't, we don't have to make a decision tonight.
That would be nice for everybody, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know.
Because it's a piece of equipment that's gonna sit around eleven months of the year.
Well, Greg, you know, Greg's thinking that, you know, depending on the conditions of the roads, um, the brush chopper could be used in the wintertime, um, you know, just clearing brush on the side of the road, I mean, obviously he's not gonna go up, um, Shardeer Hill with it without any chains on the bucket loader or anything like that, but.
Yeah, be sure.
But it could be used, it could be used if there was a downtime and the opportunity was there, but chances are the.
Okay, that part concerns me, and not being familiar with the equipment at all, but from what I heard when you were first talking about it, it's like really big, and we already have complaints from people, because their vegetation is being mowed down and.
It's not, it's no bigger than.
Bigger than that one.
Than the head that is on the mower that we're doing.
Okay.
It does have a nice long boom arm.
Well, that makes a big difference than going into somebody's yard.
Yeah, but you could use it up, you know, for, for branches that are growing into the road above and.
And I suppose we could talk to the boys about how far they wanna mow back somebody's little bush.
Doesn't seem to do much good, but.
Well, we always get more complaints when they do two passes as opposed to one, which is, first pass tight to the road, and then second pass in more to cut back the brush.
And when we had the machine ourselves and we could use it anytime, we wouldn't have to go back so far because we could maintain it like a lawn, kind of, yeah, so you wouldn't have to take as much all at once.
Okay, so, um, we'll keep working on that one. And that's it, um, you know, just for, to finish up the town highway report, the road crew is, um, working primarily on Shardeer Hill right now, that's for the fiscal year twenty, municipal roads general permit, grants and aid grant.
How's that coming?
It's coming pretty good, I haven't seen it yet, um, I think that they should be done this week, um, and I noticed they've done a little bit of work down by the school driveway for the annex building, they dug out that catch basin and.
So is the town doing that, or did you contract somebody else?
No, the town, town's doing that.
Let's just keep water out of the annex building.
That's one of, that was one of the things that was done, and there's, I think they still are planning on, um, lowering the road a little bit more, they lowered it some last year, and it helped some, I think it, but I think the annex building did flood this spring, I don't know if it flooded at all.
You could close that window behind you.
Yeah, I guess maybe they should now, it's dark and the bugs are coming in.
They're gonna be here tomorrow, too.
He's gonna be in here now, just buzzing around here.
Bring our, bring our fly bug.
Bring it again.
So that's, that's been their primary focus, they're hauling sand, um, and they're still anticipating, you know, they're spending some time with the Hardwick, um, hauling sand for them, it's usually a four-day work exchange, and that's kind of, well, usually it's happened by now, but it hasn't yet, so, um, you know, that's, that's pretty much in a very much of a nutshell of road crew work report.
What about, um, what else, town hall roof repair, do we have bids tonight?
Um, no, um, that was taken off the agenda, um, Robin called me, she hasn't gotten word, the contractors have not gotten back to her about their, their estimates, so, um, she'll let me know when they, when they have, and we'll put it back on the agenda, yeah.
Is it a possibility that someone who already works for the town could do that work?
Whoever, you know, if, if there's somebody that would.
You mean on payroll? No, without, without having to go through all the regular roll of.
Well, I have a feeling I know who you're talking about, and if they would wanna contact Robin and take a look at it and give her an estimate, I'm sure she would be open to that.
He'll be there, he's meeting her.
Okay, right, yeah, I mean, she's basically contacting local folks to, to do that, and I don't know who she's contacted.
Randy, would it be a big heartache if it was somebody doing it on payroll as opposed to an outside contractor?
Our town.
They're automatically covered under insurance.
So we could do it that way?
Yeah, but it wouldn't be covered by insurance.
Ronnie was down the other day, he said he was gonna put a bid in, and it was like, his bid is gonna be time plus material, no number.
I mean, the other contractors would either have to, uh, proof of insurance and whatever other proof they need, or they would have to sign the waiver.
But if he's working on town time because he's a, works for the town, he would, he'd be covered under our insurance, obviously.
Right, yeah, she said we'd probably.
Yeah, he is a town employee and.
He'd have to write a bid, though.
He would have to write a bid, you know, we wouldn't assume that we're gonna pay him what we pay him as a town employee.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, um, he can ask for more.
Yeah.
But then if he's not on payroll, he wouldn't be covered by insurance.
Correct, if he's not an employee.
Yeah, but he is.
No, if he's not working, if he's not working payroll hours.
If he's not working as an employee, then he's on his own, so that's.
He could sign a waiver, too.
Right, yeah, he could sign a waiver, true, yeah.
Yeah, it can be talked about.
So he's gonna look at the building, give her a rough quote or whatever?
Yeah, go see what needs to be done.
Okay, anything else for the town highway report? Any other questions?
No.
All right, um, and let me just make sure that. Okay, so, um, I would like to make a motion that we, um, if the select board goes into executive session citing one VSA Section three thirteen A two and one VSA Section three thirteen A one E.
I'll second that.
On my favor.
Bye.